Okay, I'm gonna go ahead and call the meeting to order at 6:00 PM. This is a joint meeting with the school board for Tuesday, March 25th, 2025. Madam Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
I will. I'll start out with the Assembly and move on to the school board. Tim Hale, are you on the phone? Stephanie Nowers.
Here.
Dee McKee will not be present. Maxwell Sumner.
Present.
Bill Gamble.
Here.
Dmitry Fana.
Here.
Ron Bernier.
Present.
Thomas Burkey.
Present.
Kendall Cruz will not be present. Catherine McCollum.
Present.
Andrew Shane.
Present.
Brooks Pitcher, are you on the phone? Ollie Larson.
Present.
Ted Swanson.
Present.
Madam Mayor, you have a quorum of both bodies.
Okay, thank you very much. So, are there any changes to the agenda? Go ahead. Assemblyperson Nowers, go ahead.
Thank you. If we had discussed adding a second audience participation at these special meetings with the school board and the planning commission, so I would ask that we add a second audience participation before our comments at the end.
Okay. Is there any objection from anyone to add that second audience participation? Okay, seeing none, then the agenda is changed. Any other changes to the agenda? Okay, don't see anything, okay? If you all rise, please, and President McCollum would lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And do we have an audience? We do have an audience sign up sheet, thank you. Okay, I'm gonna go ahead and open up audience participation.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and School Board and Assembly. It is always a pleasure and a privilege to speak with you. I want you to know that the definition of gaslighting is when someone is actually looking at facts or sees facts, and yet someone tells them they're not true, and they expect them to believe it. And then they bring a lot of other people to tell them that the facts aren't true, and they expect them to believe it too. It came from a movie in 1944 starring Ingrid, what's-her-face, Bergman, 1944. Okay? So, last week when I spoke, I listed facts. I deal in facts. I was the number one ranked route examiner in the Colorado and Wyoming district for eight years. I'm pretty sure I could have done the entire west side of the country, okay? And the reason why is I deal in facts. It is a fact that there is an E-Rate program that the United States sponsors for grants. It's a fact that is only for internet connectivity and websites. That is a fact. It is a fact that the borough used that money to do a library strategic plan against the FCC laws. Those are all facts. Those are all facts. It's also a fact that The Rose Group is a strategic plan and a strategic-focused company. They have nothing to do with internet. Nothing. They have nothing to do with connectivity. And it is also a fact that The Rose Group billed on their invoices the citizens and taxpayers of the Matsu Borough for in- for computer communications, telecommunications and connectivity, and they billed them for something they don't even do so that they would match the E-Rate grant. All of those things are absolute facts. So if you remember what I said last week, what I said was this looks like misappropriation of funds and fraud. I didn't say it was. I said it looks like. And I didn't need someone to sit there and say that I didn't talk to somebody on the Assembly first, and that I had been listening to internet things. And people have gone after my character ever since I started speaking out against library books. I have been under a personal attack for at least two years, and you know what happens? The mud slides off and I'm still standing here because facts matter. And honor and integrity matter. The Rose Group was up here, and they weren't up here to do in- connectivity and anything with internet. Okay? So, I pardon, please pardon my outburst last week. I have never had anyone try and gaslight what I have said before, to my face. And I apologize for the way I reacted. Thank you.
Thank you. And that's all. We only had one person sign up, but if there's anyone else in the audience that would like to address the joint session, you're welcome.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, President McCollum, School Board, members of the Assembly, staff. Todd Smolten with the Governor's Office in the Matsu. I wanted to first apologize for not attending regularly. My part-time job has training on Tuesday nights, and so sometimes that takes me away from Assembly meetings. But I wanted to speak real briefly. I know I have short time and you're not able to answer or ask questions of me, but wanted to speak real briefly about education funding and kind of where that's at. And to give you perspective, I think that the Governor would want me to communicate, which is that last year when the legislature passed HB 140, which was a BSA increase only, the Governor vetoed that. You probably remember that occurring. And then his veto was upheld by the legislature, by enough legislators. And last year, the Governor was very clear when he did that, made that veto early on in session, that the legislature had time to put together a complete education funding package that included reforms. And so he was real clear again this year on that, and he also has proposed legislation that includes reforms. The House majority moved HB 69, which was mostly a BSA increase with very little that the Governor has proposed in it currently. I think that if you are paying attention to politics and education funding in Alaska, you know that that legislation as it currently exists does not have the legislative support probably to pass, and definitely doesn't have the support to override a potential veto. So, what am I trying to say? What I'm trying to say is that as the legislature continues with its process in funding, it's really important that they also work with the Governor and his team to include reforms. The, what we don't want to happen, because the Governor does advocate for additional funding, but what we don't want to see is what happened last year where people are presented with a piece of legislation that they think is somehow going to make it across his desk only to have that funding not come through. Because that, that's just going to create more chaos, more tension. It makes it more difficult for school districts to budget and plan. So, what I hope will happen is that the legislature will continue to work with the Governor, and that when there is legislation put forward, that it'll be something that everybody can agree to. Not that everyone will be happy, but that it's something that enough of the legislators and the Governor can support. Thanks a lot.
Thank you, Todd. Anyone else that would like to address the joint session? No, we, this is audience participation, sir. Sorry. You can say something at the comments at the end of the meeting. Do we have anybody online, Caleb? We do not. Okay, one last chance for anyone else? Okay, see no one, then we will close audience participation. The next item on our agenda is the annual budget and bonding for schools. And I understand we probably do have a budget and bonding update, right?
Yes, ma'am, Madam Mayor.
Mm-hmm.
We're waiting for the presentation to get pulled up here. Okay, no rush. So, I'll kind of highlight the way we're gonna operate tonight. I'm gonna do the easy stuff at the beginning, and then I'm gonna ask Deputy Superintendent Gardner to handle all the hard numbers at the end. And then the same goes with questions. Easy questions, feel free to ask me. Hard questions, ask her. Okay, there. There we are. All right, this is essentially a very similar presentation that I showed the board at our last board meeting when I presented my superintendent's budget, and then the school board approved that budget. And I'll start the same way I started last week with the board. The one thing I can guarantee about this is that it is not going to be what actually happens. We heard from Mr. Smolten down there in Juneau. There's a lot of jockeying going on, and no one actually knows what the number's gonna be. We had to pick a number to budget on, and so we did, and I'll explain why we picked that number as we go through. I want to start out with a quick review of student achievement, and my point on this slide is to illustrate that we are getting funds and we're doing good things with those funds. These are taxpayer dollars, and we're getting good outcomes in the Matsu. I know that often you hear the statistics about the state of Alaska, and what I can tell you is although those NAPE results are accurate for the state, they are not reflective of what is happening here in our very own district. So, I could have filled up many slides, so I'll leave it at this. We lead the state in career and technical education. I actually remember Mr. Smolten talking about the overwhelming percentage of CTE courses that happen in the Matsu compared to the rest of the state. We have unprecedented AP success. I've demonstrated that to both of these bodies before. We just had the highest four-year graduation rate now for four years in a row, this, you know, for more than 25 years. I showed a series of graphs to the board several meetings ago where our average elementary school has moved into a quadrant compared to the rest of the country where they are all high growth and high achievement. So that's our reading growth continues to soar. Our math scores are on the rise. We lead the Big Five in AK-Star state testing and have for many years now. Our per pupil spending is the lowest of all the Big Five. We have the lowest spending on district administration of the Big Five, and we are, as I've demonstrated, one of the most efficient at producing graduates in the state. So we get money, and we're doing good things. I had said two things in that previous slide, and I just, we wanted to provide, you know, a picture for people who learn this way. So that top graph, the bar graph, shows the adopted budget per pupil spending of the Big Five, and you can see that we are less than all of the other Big Five, and in some cases considerably less. So, we spend less per student, which is to say that we get less per student. And, you know, I already talked about our outcomes, so we're getting less, but we're achieving more. And then I know that anytime when budgets are short, the number one thing everybody wants to cut is administration. We gotta cut administration. We gotta cut administration, and I agree. And so we have, over many years, especially the five that I've been here, and you can see that the cost, this is from deed, of district administration, we are .56%, so a little less than six tenths of a percent of our budget to spend on administration. And then, you know, Anchorage is .92%, Keene Eye .94%, and Fairbanks, one and a half percent. So, the thing that everybody wants to cut first, we've already cut. So going from there, what my charge is to the board is to provide a balanced budget. That's what this slide is. 2025 shows that our revised budget is about 278 million in revenue and 278 million in expenditures. When we rolled all of those things up, when we initially showed what we thought would happen this year, our revenue came in at 265 million and our total expenditures at 287 million. And then that was our job to develop a budget that balanced. And that is the far-right column. So our balanced budget is about 281 million in revenue and a similar amount in, the exact amount, not similar, the exact same amount in expenditures of 281,601,753. Before I leave this slide and hand it over to Deputy Superintendent Gardner, I want to point out just two things. If you compare the total expenditures in 2025 to our proposed budget in 2026, we're going from 27, 278.1 million to 281.6, about three and a half million dollar increase. If you look carefully at the expenditures on the right in that orange column, you'll see that the charter schools are going from 24.17 million to 26.4, so an increase of 2.3 million. Most of the increases in this budget are because of the charter schools. We've essentially kept a really huge amount of money, you know, over a quarter of a billion dollars, pretty flat from one year to the next. And that comes with a series of cuts which are proposed on the following slides. With that, I'll hand it over to you.
So, with some of that context, good evening, Madam Mayor, Assembly and School Board. We wanted to provide some additional detail as to how we have proposed to the board, and the board has supported looking at bringing those revenues and expenditures in alignment. And in doing that, we wanted to do just another quick review for where our funding comes from. Really, as we talk about such a large portion of funding coming from the state and the assumptions that the district is making in getting us to a balanced budget, we are at a point in time where we essentially have to guess as to what revenue will be. Now, it's an educated guess. It's a guess that we are coming to with a lot of external information, but as Dr. Trainey started, it is right now a guess because not only is the state funding not secured, right, the borough has a process that they go through to determine borough funding. So, those two items together really make up about 99% of the school district revenue. And first, in talking about borough funding, which we have presented previously, talked about a lot, but leads into our assumptions regarding state funding fairly well, is that we requested, the board requested from the Assembly, a 4% increase in local education funding for fiscal year 2026. Most of that request makes up the increase that will be occurring in the required local contribution. And as a reminder, as that required local contribution, which is calculated at the state level, goes up, that is an amount of money that is deducted from state revenue that the school district receives. So every dollar of the required local that increases is a dollar that the district doesn't receive from the state of Alaska. So if borough funding doesn't at least keep up with that minimum required, then the school district receives less in funding on an annual basis. And so the 4% that we have requested, we think is reasonable, and keeps us at just above that increase in the minimum required local. You can see here where funding was in 2015 compared to 2026, and how that line has changed most dramatically over the last two years. Fortunately, we've seen that minimum required local contribution start to taper off a bit. And with a 4% increase, you can see that it brings our total request to 78 million, which is 3 million above the funding for the current year, and 500,000 just over above that increase in the required local contribution. When we transition from borough funding to state funding, the most important factor, one of the most important factors in determining how much revenue the district receives is based on enrollment. based on enrollment. And our enrollment projection for fiscal year 2026 is required to be submitted to the state of Alaska in November of 2024. So quite a bit in advance of when we're actually tracking these students. We use what's called a two-year cohort survival method to determine this funding, where we're tracking where students are attending over a two-year period of time. What we saw for 2025 was a reduction in student enrollment overall. In addition, what this slide doesn't show is that we saw an increased number of students electing homeschool, Matsui Central School, Twinkly Bridge, and Kinnick Charter School as an option for their learning, which has a secondary impact on total revenue received from the state of Alaska. But as we look at fiscal year 2026, we have a, basically a modest, very small increase in funding, in enrollment, excuse me, and most of those, that increase is because of the estimates that charter schools anticipate for their student enrollments for the subsequent year, and also a secondary increase to Matsui Central School. As you know, but I'll review very quickly, the foundation formula starts with what's referred to as the average daily membership. This is more of a student count, a head count, if you will, of students who are enrolled through a 20-day count period in the month of October. And then that number goes through a series of adjustments through what the foundation formula, and gets to a funding number at the end that's referred to as the adjusted average daily membership. So those 19,000 students become 35,000 students. All of those students move through that formula until we get to step five and step six. Step five is an escalation for only students who are identified as receiving intensive funding. These are students with very high needs who require a high level of support as part of their education. And then in step six, all correspondence students are essentially reduced downward. So for every correspondent student, the district counts them at 0.9 students when they are in the formula. And those students also do not flow through those earlier steps and have the advantage of those earlier adjustments. But when all is said and done, we move from 19,164 for fiscal year 2026 to 35,549. Now, the other key factor when looking at state revenue is the base student allocation. One important factor when we look at the base student allocation and what the board has approved, assuming for fiscal year 2026, is an increase in the base student allocation of $1,000. That is the proposal that is outlined in House Bill 69. That is not all of the funding that's available in House Bill 69. We did not want to over-assume our revenue, and we recognize that this funding might come in a different form. It might look very different. But the $1,000 increase gets us to a revenue number that allows us to have a reasonable plan for fiscal year 26. What I also want to point out here is that $1,000 in isolation, you talk about $1,000 increase on the base student allocation, that sounds like a large increase. But it's important to remember that the district is currently receiving $680 per student in one-time funding. And so the $1,000 would not be on top of that 680, but in replacement of that 680. Additionally, for fiscal year 2025, the district received transportation funding, an increase of $104 per student in transportation funding. That is helping to sustain our transportation operations, which transportation funding hasn't received an increase outside of that one time since, I believe, 2015. So it's been flat funding for a long time. The operating fund has been required to subsidize the pupil transportation operation. So really, that increase in pupil transportation funding helps support district operations. So when we look at all of that together, and we look at what that increase would be, it's really only about a 3.2% increase in state funding. While $1,000 sounds like a lot, 3.2% is a very different number. And when you take all of that in context, it's important to understand what the district's currently receiving and what that $1,000 means, whether it comes in a BSA increase, one-time funding increase, transportation increases, whether the current concept of payments for students who are showing growth. We are open to a number of those concepts and how it would come, but the bottom line of 6960 or some format that is similar still does not sustain our operations, still results in cuts for fiscal year 2026. So moving away from the revenue side and the assumptions that we have built into this budget there, we wanted to spend some time talking about the expenditure adjustments, and talking about where funding exists and what reductions have been made. So we generally talk about expenditure types, and those expenditure types are typically personnel, salaries and benefits, and staff, non-personnel, which are discretionary spending, utilities, and then budget transfers. But when we just look at those four categories, especially in this year's budget, there are a few key pieces where there's not a lot of discretion to make reductions, and it's important to pull out some of those key figures. And so this expenditure summary shows some of those areas where the figures are locked in and additional reductions can't be experienced. And the first is for charter schools. Charter schools, as charter schools, have additional discretion over their budgets. And so they receive per pupil funding based on the enrollment that they project for the next fiscal year, and they have control over those expenditure areas. So you can see that those figures are pulled out at about 24 million, 26 million for the proposed, and that is an increase based on their projection that students at their schools will be growing. If those students don't show up, then their budgets will see an adjustment, just like the district would in the fall. But most of this increase is really at those charter schools. In addition, we break out non-personnel spending, both for discretionary and student allotments. And you can see that student allotments for our district, particularly Matsui Central School, is $7.7 million. So those are allotments that are set aside for those students. Those aren't reductions unless we are assuming fewer students from year to year. Those allotments aren't an area where we're proposing any reductions as a way to balance the budget. And so when we look at personnel, the non-personnel discretionary spending, those are school budgets and department budgets. Utilities are holding flat, and transfers, that is really where a majority of the cuts are. And while we've proportionally looked to discretionary cuts at about 15% reduction to try to maintain staff, when our total budget has over 80% salaries and benefits, when we're looking at having to maintain spending at really a flat revenue, we have to cut positions in order to get to the numbers that we need to in order to have a balanced budget. The other thing I will mention for transfers is really there's two parts of transfers. A majority of this, about $6 million, is going to support pupil transportation. That does assume some reductions in pupil transportation. And then the additional funds is a transfer back to the Matsui Borough in support of the new Matsui Central School building of about $570,000. That starts now that the building is in operation, and rent will not be paid beginning in fiscal year 2026. That was part of the resolution and agreement to get that building built. So when we look at dollars for personnel, it's hard to conceptualize what that means. What does $208 million in salaries and benefits look like? And so it's important that we talk a little bit about what cuts are being proposed and how we've made a recommendation regarding these reductions. The district uses pupil teacher ratios for many position allocations, and mostly for school allocations. And we have not seen a reduction in the PTR that we've used to allocate staff for the last several years. Part of that is because we've had one-time funds that have been used to sustain positions, even when we've seen some changes in our enrollment and reductions in enrollment. And so even for fiscal year 26, when we're looking at reductions to positions, our PTRs are able to hold the positions that we are proposing that are eliminated are outside of these metrics. So they're additional positions that have existed in schools to support operations, but that have been funded with one-time dollars that there's no longer a replacement for. And so these metrics continue, and these are the listing of the staff that will exist in fiscal year 2020, the staff that exist in fiscal year 2025, and those that are proposed for fiscal year 2026. You can see that the largest areas, we've tried to balance reductions across categories. The largest reductions are in the areas where we have the most staff, so classroom teachers, as well as, on the classified side, the instructional support, which are assistants in mostly special education classrooms, but some of our other classrooms. And remember, part of this reduction is happening because we've got about 600 in-person learning students less proposed for fiscal year, projected for fiscal year 26 than we have in fiscal And then finally, you can see, this is really the slide that we started with. In the end, after we look at the reductions both to discretionary and personnel, we get to a balanced budget, where revenues, based on the assumptions that we have built in, match the expenditures and the reductions that are being proposed. As a reminder, and as we talk about the timeline, while it feels like we've been talking about the budget for years, we're really about in the middle of the process. So this is the point in time that we are presenting this budget to the Assembly. We have a requirement in code to provide detail by April 1st. That detail you have in front of you in a couple of ways. One is the very large packet that really kind of shows some of that line item detail, the by-function, by-object, by-location information, as well as the budget handbook, which hopefully synthesizes some of that detail, provides some narrative, so it's a little more digestible for our school community. And then, of course, we will continue to engage with the Assembly as you go through your budget process and providing any information or answering questions that you might have. We're continuing to wait and monitor the legislature to understand what it looks like they're going to be passing, and will be incorporating any changes there as we continue through the budget process. And really, in the end, we end up with three budgets throughout the year. We have a preliminary budget, which is a starting point, the superintendent-proposed budget, which is proposed by the superintendent, passed by the board, and transmitted to the Assembly, and then a final adopted budget that will be completed in late May, early June, which hopefully allows us to incorporate some more known information, particularly on the revenue side, where we have an allocation from the state, we have a final appropriation from the borough, and then we are able to adjust those expenditures to align with those more known revenue figures. So that is a $281 million budget in, I guess, about 30 minutes. But certainly, both Dr. Trainey and I are happy to answer any questions that you have, provide any additional information that you'd like to understand.
Yeah, just like that, we went through 281 million, right? Yeah, must be time to go home by that, right? Assembly or School Board comments? Questions by anybody? I guess not. Thank you very much. Oh, I'm sorry, Assemblyperson Gamble, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Dr. Trainey, Katie, thank you very much for the opportunity to ask questions. That was a lot. I mean, that was a lot of information, short period of time. Could you go back to the budget history slide? The borough funding history slide, I'm sorry. And so did you, did I hear you correctly when you said, for every dollar that we fund over the minimum, the state reduces what they contribute by the same amount?
Through the mayor to Assemblymember Gamble. So for the, not over the minimum. So the funding that is appropriated by the borough over the minimum comes to the school district, and there's no adjustment. What the state does as part of the foundation formula is they go through all of their calculations, and they take that 35,000 number, right, of students, and whatever the base student allocation is, they multiply those together, and that provides a number that's referred to as basic need. And so basic need is then reduced by the minimum required number. And that difference is what is provided to the school district for operations. That's the state entitlement. So for fiscal year 26, the calculation is, you know, over $200 million when you go through all of this and multiply it by the base student allocation. And then it is reduced by 49.6 million, because that is the calculated minimum required contribution for fiscal year 26. The complication, and what can be a challenge, is that the calculation of the minimum required is based on the total assessed values in the borough, where state funding is based on information totally separate from that. So as assessed values in the borough go up, the school district essentially has a consequence for those increased values and less funding from the state.
Yes, go ahead, President.
Maybe I can, this is a huge thing, and I remember feeling like I don't get this, but here's part of it also, is that because we're an organized borough, they expect our borough to pitch in. So therefore, the other boroughs that are unorganized, they don't have that deduction. So that's part of the issue for us.
I'm not sure.
Could I take a stab at it, too? So based on the states, based on all of the states', you know, calculations, what they basically have said is, Matsui Borough, you have to give them $2.5 million more, and we're going to give them $2.5 million less. That's the difference in the bottom orange line on that slide. The required last year was 47.18 million, and the required of the borough this year is 49.66 million. So they're going to take that 2.48 million away from us, and they want you to pay it. And if you were to, like, you have to pay it. And we're asking for about $518,000 more than that, which is a 4% increase, if you combine all of that. But to us, it's not a 4% increase, because the state took 2.5 million away already, or will. Does that help?
It's still fuzzy. So I'm going to research that some more. I also want to thank you for this book, because I don't ever remember the school district giving out the budget like this, and I really appreciate your information. I had another question about, if I may, Madam Mayor, ask another question, on expenditure scenarios, that slide. Yeah, you just passed it. Yep. So as I was trying to absorb a lot of this stuff you're saying, could you explain to me again what a student allotment is? And then could you put it, because there's that note down at the bottom that says exclude $6,361,739 in charter and student allotment carryover. Could you explain that to me?
Through the mayor. So student allotments are the funds that, in policy, are outlined to be available to charter school families to spend on their students' education. And there are certain provisions, homeschool, yeah, homeschool students, there are certain provisions for what they can and can't be spent on. And so there is an allocation based on that per-student amount for currently and for next year. That amount is $3,000 for students in grades nine through 12, and $2,600 for students in grades kindergarten through eighth grade. And so we budget, assuming that students expend that full amount, so we set aside funding for the full amount based on the number of students. However, state law requires us that at the end of the year, if those funds are not expended by those students, they roll over to the next year to be used by those students. They do not come back to the district as operating dollars unless that student is no longer enrolled in the homeschool. So the $7 million that's set aside for student allotments, those are for the students enrolled in correspondence for fiscal year 2026. The footnote at the bottom, that is the funds that we are carrying from year to year, based on students who don't expend them in one year, and they're going to carry that balance to the next. When we, if we tried to incorporate those dollars into an expenditure line item, it's going to make it look going to make it look like there's $6 billion more to be spent in fiscal year 2025, and that it's a reduction in fiscal year 2026. When that's not accurate, it's more likely that some of those dollars may be expended, but many of them will roll over into future years, and we have to track them for the students that have essentially earned them. We can't bring them back unless those students withdraw from that homeschool environment. So it's a, it's a restricted area of fund balance, and so we, we don't want to include it in the current year's expenditures. That wouldn't be an accurate representation in comparing fiscal year 25 to 26.
That I understand, thank you.
The Assemblyperson Fanauf, you had some questions?
Yeah, can we, again, go back to the slide that we had, the funding history?
Do you have a mic on? I just don't see it. Okay, great, good. I wanted to be sure we're recorded, thank you.
So I guess, to compare, for us to see, if, if the borough was to give the minimum, which is, let's say, 50 to round it up, by how much less than the state gives if, if we were at the, I just want to, just for context, to see what it would do from the state if we went to the minimum and/or if we went to the maximum? Is there a way to, just to see, or at least rough numbers?
Yes, through, through the mayor to Assemblymember Fanauf. So if the minimum required is 50 million, right, and the state calculation from the BSA to the, our adjusted average daily membership, let's say that calculation gets us to 200 million, just to make the math easy.
Okay.
Then the state would actually provide to the school district 150 million. And if the borough did not provide anything in excess of the minimum, then all the funding that the school district would have would be that 150 million.
What if, if we go to the maximum, does that increase how much they give?
Through the chair, no, it does not increase, it does not impact how much the state gives.
Okay, so...
Anywhere between, say, 50 and 100 million on this slide, right? Again, rounding up.
Yeah.
If the borough provides anywhere between 50 and 100 million, the state still provides 150 million in that hypothetical, highly rounded example.
Then how does it, how does it end to the 200 mark, then? You said they'll give two, if we only give the 50, they give 150. Are you talking about, that's combined, the 50 and 150, is that correct?
Through the chair. So the 200 number is what the calc, what the foundation formula would calculate. So the state foundation formula takes the base student allocation and the calculated enrollment, and it results in what's called basic need. And that, for us, would be 200 million in this example. But the state then takes that formula one step further, and it removes the minimum required local contribution. Of 50 million, again, in this hypothetical.
Okay. Might have to spend some time after a meeting to learn. Completely, fully understand that portion of it. Separate questions, not related. In neither of these books, is there a line that separates or shows what the budget is for preschool, before kindergarten, that three to five-year-old? Is there a way to see, or per school, or total? I kind of wanted to know if there is a, if we have an idea what preschool is costing to...
Through the chair to Assemblymember Fanauf. So most of our preschool programs are provided for through grant funds, which are not included in this document. The only preschool programs that we support from district general operating dollars are special education preschool programs. And we do receive partial funding for those students from the state to support those preschool programs. And I don't think we have, we have a program code for preschool. I don't think we go into that detail in this document.
Okay, thank you.
Further questions from the Assembly or Assemblyperson hours? Go ahead.
Thank you. Yeah, it's a lot to absorb, and you almost need to, I don't know, go to Legos or something really simple to explain it. I do know one thing that is sort of unfair to the organized boroughs is we, the amount the state reduces us is based on our assessed, our total assessed valuation, not including mandatory exempted property. So the state requires us to give 150,000 exemption for seniors, and they don't fund us for that, and then they also deduct, they also include that valuation in deciding how much to deduct from us. So it would be nice if the state, at the very minimum, did not ding us for having a deduction that they require. Some of the other things we voluntarily chose to do, but... I had a couple of questions on the, you've got the historic pupil-to-teacher ratio chart. So you're not showing any changes in the pupil-to-teacher ratio, but when I looked at the staffing comparison, it looked like the reduction, if you pull that one up. The number of classroom teachers is declining by 30, and special education teachers by a couple. So how do we, when I look at enrollment, that's supposed to increase next year, how are we maintaining the same pupil-to-teacher ratio but losing 30-some positions? If you could talk about that?
Through the mayor to Assemblymember Nowers. So there's, there's two calculations that individuals often use interchangeably, and they're not interchangeable. And those are the pupil-teacher ratio that is used for budgeting purposes, and there's average class size. And so, the pupil-teacher ratio is a metric that we use to allocate staff on an annual basis as part of the budget process, based on projected enrollment. And it is how we ensure that there's equity across all of our buildings. And so, we structure those ratios and have them listed here, and they're different for different grade spans. So K3, 3, K2, 35, 68, and 912. And so, I think high school is probably a really good example, so we are staffing that at 33 to 1. So for every 33 students, we allocate a classroom teacher to support that school's operation. That is not the same as what the average class size is. The average class size is a calculation that we do annually after the school year begins, which takes a look at how many students are actually enrolled in each class, and averages that. And one area at the secondary level where we might allocate 33, a 33 to 1 ratio, not all of those teachers are teaching every class throughout the day. So those 33 to 1 are going to be spread out through fewer teachers, because there's things like prep time. We also have other teachers that we might assign based on programmatic needs. So for example, career and technical education, they're provided with additional staff to support career and technical education outside of these metrics. And so, our published ratios and what we use for the baseline for our budget, that has not changed. For the last several years, with COVID relief funds, and then last year through fund balance, we maintain classroom positions in excess of these numbers, not anticipating the decreases in enrollment that we're having. And that's why I mentioned that even the average class size probably isn't going to change that much, because we have about 600 students less in fiscal year 2026 than we projected in fiscal year 2025. And while our total enrollment is not changing by that much, if you look at what was projected for the current year, which is what we staffed on for the current year, and you recognize that we have more students going to charter schools and more students going to homeschool, the net is there's about 600 fewer students in neighborhood schools. And so, most of these classroom teacher reductions are reflective of those changes in projection.
Thank you. I won't attempt to say that I understood that. I may be on a very, very, but I'm not sure I'd need to. If, if the average class, I mean, if the average class size is staying about, I guess that's the question. Given the reduction in students and your current staffing, and that you kind of had a higher projection this year than you came in, is the average class size? I guess that's the meat of the question. Are we going to see those go up with this budget?
While she's finding the page. Yes, but I'll, I try to provide some clarity and probably just make it worse. We anticipate more students moving to correspondence. There's no real class size metric there. What there is there is a correspondence advisor hand, you know, might have a, a class load of 110, 120 students, right? Compared to a class size metric of in the twenties, you know, twenties to thirties. That's part of the reason why, as we, as we see more kids shift to correspondence, our class size for the students left in brick and mortar is not going to change as dramatically as you might suspect with the loss of, you know, 30 teachers. And now...
I think there's one number that I'll point to, is if you look on page 5 of the handbook, you can see a, a listing of what the district has projected, along with what the actual enrollment count has been. And so, even for fiscal year 2025, we projected 19,400 students. And we only had 19,081 students. And of that 19,081, we had more students in correspondence than we projected. So I do anticipate with some of the reductions that we are experiencing in these, in these personnel, we might see some very small increases in average class sizes once the, once the calculations come out. But our PTR, we still have more staff in schools than our PTR metrics would generate.
Okay, thank you. And I have just a couple other questions.
Sure.
If I may, Madam Mayor. It sounds like that trend of people going to homeschool correspondence is a really big thing that's happening in our district. Is there anywhere in this information that shows us what those numbers have looked like over the past five years?
While she's looking, what I can tell you is that when I started here five years ago, the, I guess, the year before I started, the year before COVID, we got to throw COVID year out, because lots of people went to correspondence school. Where about 14% of our total population was in correspondence school. And at the start of this year, we were at 18%. I bet you by now, we're probably pushing 19%. And that's the same trend that we see across the state. It is, correspondence schools are growing across the state, and our percentage of students in correspondence is growing commensurate with the rest of the state.
And then through the, through the mayor, if you look in the large packet at page 104, you will see summary information for Matsu Central School. Now, this is just one of our correspondence schools. We have Twindley Bridge Charter School, as well as Connect Charter School. But about midway through that page, for Matsu Central School, you can see where we say ADM enrollment. And so, it's not five years, but it is the enrollment for 2024, 25, and then projected for 2026. So we've got that available, and we could certainly provide to the manager to share with the Assembly what the five-year trend has been for homeschool aggregate of all of those programs.
Okay, thank you. And, and then just a couple more quick, well, hopefully quick questions. When I look at the budget, the comparison summary page, 2026...
I'm sorry.
The, the comparison summary has the budget, basically, the, the school budgets that, I think...
The expenditure summary?
No, comparison summary. It's the one that's in black.
Thank you, sorry.
Is there anywhere, like, you've got student numbers back to 2021, and you've got teacher, the teacher ratio back to then, is there anywhere in the documents that we have that shows the budget back? So we can see 2021, 2022, kind of more of a trend line? Is that in any of this? Or could we get that? We don't, we don't have to get it the second, but... It has, we have borough funding history back, but we don't have the overall school budget.
So through the mayor, on page 15 of the handbook, we do have back to 2022 for actuals on the expenditure side, and we could certainly provide more years. Of course, all of the school districts' adopted budgets, as well as all of our annual comprehensive financial reports, are all posted online, but we're certainly happy to synthesize if you'd like to see information back to, whenever, we could provide that.
Okay, I would appreciate that, because I, rather than climb through all the budget documents, and I'll take a look at that page 15, too. But, thank you.
Any other questions from any of the Assembly members or school board? Yes, go ahead, sir, go ahead.
Can we go to the state foundation formula? For clarity, the 19,164 on the left, does that include every school?
Through the mayor to Member Swanson, yes. The 19,001, 19,164 includes all schools.
So that means Matsu Central is included with that?
Yes, Matsu Central is included in that 19,164.
So homeschool students do go through the entire process and end up at the end, step six. They're, they're reduced by 10% as a, as a population. If that column, if step six, as 90%, were to be closer to the left side of the formula, and we were to reduce the number at the beginning, we would end up with a smaller number on the right.
Through the mayor to Mr. Swanson, I apologize if the graphic is not clear. The, the number ADM is the number of students enrolled in the school district. There are pages of legislation that outline how each of these steps are calculated through the formula. And so, no, correspondence students do not have, are not part of the calculation for steps 1, 2, 3, 4. There could, there could, in theory, be a correspondence student who's an intensively funded student. It's very unlikely. So really, steps 1 through 5, correspondence students are pulled out. They are only added in, in that last step.
Right, but at the beginning, the ADM, every student enrolled in the district is included in that number. So they're counted at 100% of a student to start for the, for the steps 1 and 2, right?
That is not correct.
They're pulled out entirely, so it's disingenuous to say that it's 19, that we start with 19,000, then. Shouldn't it be closer to 16,000?
So through the chair, we, we, the ADM, the average daily membership, is inclusive of all of our students. So the average daily membership is 19,164. Step 1 is the school size adjustment factor. So you take all of our school locations, with the exception of correspondence, and there's a calculation that each of those schools go through, goes through, that's independent of each other. And, and so, for example, a smaller school has an escalation that's larger than a larger school. So Colony High School, for example, in the end, the school size adjustment for Colony High School, I think, is less than the ADM for Colony High School, because of its size and because of the calculation. We take all of those school size adjustments, aggregate them, and then we apply the district cost factor. Again, that does not include correspondence students. Then we apply the special needs factor, then we apply the voc-ed funding factor, then we identify the... we identify the intensively funded students. And only those students are part of step five, and it is added to the calculation for step four. And then only the correspondence students are part of step six, and that number is added to the result at the end of step five. So we still go from a 19,164 head count, so to speak, to a 35,569 adjusted head count for funding purposes.
So there's no way any correspondence students who are enrolled in special needs, vocation, ed, or intensive service get counted?
So through the chair, the correspondence students, if they're co-enrolled and they're partially enrolled in a traditional school, then they, they, part of them would be counted in those early steps. And it is possible for a correspondence student to be eligible for intensive funding. I don't believe we currently have any. I don't believe we have had any for the last few years. It's highly unlikely. It would be rare.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions from assembly members or school board? Okay, if not, then I guess we're ready to proceed to the item B on the joint items of business. Is there a hybrid learning update?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We're going to pull up the next presentation. It's shorter. We wanted to just really give a, a high-level overview of Matsu Central and our new Matsu Hybrid Learning Academy. It's pretty high level. I'll go on to the, the, the next slide. Our, our whole goal here is to expand opportunities for the future of homeschool in the Matsu borough. As noted earlier, we have more and more students moving towards correspondence schools. Our correspondence, our, our largest correspondence school, the Matsu Central School, has been operating as a hybrid learning environment for maybe almost two decades, a long time. And what we mean by that is for students and their families who are interested, they have been able to take in-person coursework at Matsu Central. And like you could go look on the website and see videos that Matsu Central folks have made in the years past about this opportunity, and it's attractive to a certain segment of our population. They take advantage of it. So they do most of their work at home, like a traditional homeschool, but they take advantage of in-person learning opportunities. Because of, because of this funding formula thing, thank you for those questions earlier, we do not get any in-person funding for a student who is receiving in-person learning at a correspondence school. And it's that last part, the at a correspondence school, that's important. It's important because that's where it enters into that la, that last step. If, if a student at a correspondence school receives in-person learning at a non-correspondence school, then they flow through the formula for the percentage of the time that they are doing in-person learning. So what the board has approved is the creation of a new school code. It's not a new school building. It will be housed in the Mat, in the new Matsu Central building, just like it has always been, but it will operate as an in-person school, not a, not a correspondence school. Basically, what Deed said is, well, yeah, it is in-person learning, but you could never get funded for it because Matsu Central is a correspondence school. The code that it has, the school code that it has from Deed is a correspondence, it's a correspondence code. So you could never get, so after years of thinking about it, it finally occurred to me, well, then we'll just make a new code. And that's what the, and that's what the board has authorized us to do. And so you'll see draft over here on the right because technically we are still waiting for the final okay from Deed, although we've spoken to the commissioner multiple times. We've, you know, we're, we're waiting for the ink though on paper that says, yes, the school code, here's your new school code. So in that building, we'll have the Matsu Central School and we'll also have the Matsu Hybrid Learning Academy. From a student's perspective, nothing is going to change, except for, we hope to offer more opportunities for hybrid learning that students might be interested in. So that's really the big change. We feel like we're at kind of a, an important crossroads because if you build it, they will come, and we certainly have built a fantastic new facility, and we need to tell people about that. So we have a huge marketing campaign. Videos are being produced. We're going to try to flood everywhere with information about the brand-new building. You're going to have more opportunities than ever at the Matsu Hybrid Learning Academy for hybrid courses, if you want them. You certainly don't have to take advantage of them, but if you want them, they're there. And we hope that that will help us get more students to roll through the entire funding formula. And the last one, I think you all have received this invite, but if not, here it is again. We would love it if you all could come to the Matsu Central ribbon cutting on April 4th at one, at 1:00 PM. It's going to be a fantastic event. There's, you know, if, if you haven't been in the new facility, it really is amazing. I was in there today. It's amazing how fast they have constructed something that's beautiful. I could take any questions on.
When are they physically in the building now?
So, so they are, staff are physically in the building now. It's like, there was furniture being delivered today. Like when I was there, I saw more furniture coming in. I also saw students there. So would I say it is 100% operational? No, not yet. Is it really, really close to 100% operational? Yeah, it's getting really close. You know, I, I saw staff members hauling, you know, office things in and setting up their office and people moving chairs around. It's pretty darn close, like 99.9%, I'd say there.
Okay, good. Any others, yes, assembly person, Sumner, go ahead.
Yeah, you said that there's a, I mean, a local and a statewide trend for students moving to correspondence schools. Is there a nationwide trend with that too?
You know, I'd, I'd say yes, in huge generalities, both with correspondence schools and especially charter schools across the country. Some charter schools, of course, are correspondence schools. We have, we have some right here, right here in the valley. That is an increase across the country. I, I have a number stuck in my head of 32 states that have correspondence, but I can't remember, don't quote me on that. It's a lot. It didn't used to be that way.
Any other questions or comments by anybody? Yes, assembly person, Fallon, go ahead.
I guess this might be an interesting question. You know, we were talking about hybrid and a little bit of interesting. Do you see, or is there a trend, or this is completely maybe irrelevant, but like the way that education is going to be approached in the next five, 10 years? And is there any states that are showing anything maybe outside of ordinary that might have been not practicing the task at all, but something that is maybe certain states or maybe counties that are trying that is maybe outside of the box? And do you follow any of that as administration? And do you see anything that might be worth mentioning so that in the next couple of years that we start seeing maybe completely different, something that we're not even used to, not the way we went to school? But I want to know if you as administration have anything that you've keeping your eyes on? This is, yeah, just a broad answer.
Just a giant question, but I, I think I have a, a, a good answer because it's really close to home. What I have noticed in education across the country, painting with a really broad brush, is that choice is becoming more and more important everywhere. And that really wasn't the case probably when most of us grew up, right? You had your, if you were in any place with any size, unlike me, I mean, there was only one school in Cordova, so that's where I went. But if you were in any place of any size, you had your boundary area and that's kind of where you went unless your parents could afford to send you to some private school. That's changing, and I don't think it's changing any faster than right here in the Matsu. Like when I got here, we were already a, a district of choice. When, when I talked about charter schools proliferating across the country, that's choice, right? So that's the big change in education. And I think Alaska is one of the leaders in choice. I think Matsu is one of the leaders on choice in Alaska. And so the hybrid learning idea is just to provide more choice to, to students and families in an environment that's not the typical environment where you have to go to school. You know, like this class happens every day at 9:00 AM. Hybrid learning, it doesn't have to happen that way. It could happen, you know, in different increments. It could happen on Saturday. It doesn't have to, you know, it could happen anytime. It's only up to as creative as we want to be and what people want to choose. So that's one of the, the changes that we're trying to embrace is let's ask, let's ask families, what do you want? And then we'll offer what they want. That's, I think that's a big change that's happening across our country.
Assembly, our school board member Larson first, and then I'll come to you.
Just a couple of things. That's why we've gone real heavy into a technical school. I mean, we're a leader in the state for that, we're a leader in the state for choice. But I would like you to, if you could talk a little bit about this hybrid program classes that we're talking about teaching. It's not like we're going to teach golf or, or something like that. What kind of classes are we going to present? Our teachers are going to teach, and why would they teach these classes?
Yeah. Thank you for that. So I'll kind of pick up where I left off. I think it starts with asking our families what courses they are interested, what are their needs, what, you know? And the way to do that is provide them with like, here's all of the things that we think we could teach, similar to how community college might send out their schedule, like here's courses that are going to be offered this term. Who's interested? And then that's how we will decide what courses. I don't think we'll probably teach golf either, but we might be surprised what if we sent it out there and everybody was like, there's 500 of us want to learn how to golf. Well, then let's offer that golf class and call it PE. But, but one of the things that we do think that we're going to hear a lot from our correspondence families is CTE. Like we think that if we offer more CTE courses, we're going to hear from correspondence families that, yeah, I'd be interested in taking a hybrid learning correspondence course about CTE. And, you know, as we build this new, this new way of looking at it, we have lots of facilities all over the valley, and our hybrid learning doesn't just need to be confined to Matsu Central Building. It will be probably largely next year. We're, we're starting something new. But if we hear that, you know, that, and I always use Mr. Trotter's classic Colony because he's so good at teaching welding and there's such a high demand for it. If we hear from a whole bunch of people that they'd be interested in learning welding outside of traditional school hours, then we will find a teacher like Mr. Trotter to provide that instruction in facilities that are sitting around the whole entire valley that are empty, like this time of the day. There's nobody in the welding class right now. If we could offer a course, if there was enough interest, we should be.
Assembly person, Campbell.
Thank you, Mayor. Dr. Trinney, with the recent termination of the Federal Department of Education and it being returned to states, can you tell us what you foresee and what the advantages or disadvantages might be?
You guys are just asking all these easy questions. I can only tell you what I have learned from our commissioner, and she's been really great at communicating with all of the superintendents, the information that they're getting. For this year, what we've been told is that all of the funding that's in place is in place. And so there was initially some worry that, you know, funding would disappear in the middle of the year after people had been hired. That doesn't appear the case. What we understand right now is that the federal funding that did go through Deed will now be sent through the, the state. Beyond that, I, I hazard to guess, like, you know, there's, there's just rumors every direction about what may happen. I think advantages, you know, when you think about advantages, it's that there could be less bureaucracy, so that bureaucracy costs money, so if the money's going directly to the state. Disadvantages is anytime anything changes, everyone's worried about the dragons that are going to come, and so we all have what dragons are going to come out of this. I'm not sure what to expect. So I'm, I'm fairly comfortable with change, so I'm not that worried about it right now. I'm just willing to wait and see, but I'm not going to predict.
Thank you. Follow-up?
Follow-up.
You mentioned welding earlier. Are you seeing more requests for trade-type classes? I know out in my community, there are a lot of kids that would rather do something with their hands than, you know, go to college. Are you seeing that across the borough?
Absolutely. And like, before I got here, the Matsu was already an absolute leader in career technical education. And since I've gotten here, we've all, maybe more than doubled our number of students in career technical education courses. I'm positive we've more than doubled our number of career technical education concentrators, which are students who've taken two courses in a row that lead to some certification. And, you know, it's, I'm trying to make sure I'm accurate on this. We might only offer more English than we do CTE. That might be the only course, the only type of course that we have more of than career technical education in our district. We, we lead the state by a long ways, and it's growing, and we're trying to make it grow. Now you got my soapbox out. And why are we trying to make it grow? Because kids who are CTE concentrators, they have a graduation rate of 97, 98, 99%. So why wouldn't I want every kid to be a CTE concentrator? And that's the big push.
Assembly person, Hours.
Thank you, Mayor. Since we're asking you to answer for federal programs, and I, it just made me think when, when Bill asked that, so that expertise that was, are we, do we have that expertise at the state level to administer Deed programs? Or is part of the change going to be figuring like people coming up to speed on these programs that were administered federally?
I think you just described one of the dragons that people might be worried about, right? Like, and, and I haven't got to talk with our commissioner or anybody from Deed specifically about this, but obviously it's going to be more work for somebody at each of the, each of the states. And I'm sure that they're concerned with like, who's going to do this work? Will we be able to use any of the funds to provide more staff? Or is it just, you know, I, I don't know.
Okay.
I'm sure that's a concern.
Okay, thank you for answering that.
I'm going down there. I, I will see the commissioner Sunday so I can ask her then.
And then since Mr. Spolden is in the room and is always talking about performance measures and making sure we're doing good, can you speak a little bit about how we measure the outcomes depending on whether you are a student in sort of traditional school, correspondence school, and homeschool in terms of the testing we do to see if the kids are learning or, you know, how we know they're getting a good education and what maybe the differences are in terms of how we measure it, depending on what type of student you are?
You're asking me, not Mr. Smol. I'm just making sure.
He could, I'm sure he answered you.
So I don't know if you recall, when I presented to this body before, one of the graphics like to use is concentric circles laying over the top of each other and that we have lots of different metrics that we use to try to assess where we are, and there isn't any one particular one that we look at. There are some big ones, and the big one that most people probably think about is the AK STAR, the state testing results. It's, you know, what we have is about 15% of our students in correspondence take the state assessment. So we don't have any data on that particular measure to know how they're doing relative to the students in the brick and mortar, where it's more like about 85% of them take the state assessments. So that's one of those, like I can't actually tell from that data how the big groups of students are doing. With AK REEDS Act, what we have is almost all of the students are involved in that testing, both in correspondence and in brick and mortar. So then we can tell how they're doing relative to each other. And I've been one of the advocates for like, we've pulled it off with the REEDS Act. I wonder if we can pull it off with some other assessment. I don't care what it is, just so we have a, a metric of how we're doing. I don't care what it is, just so we have a metric of how we're doing K-12. Now I'm going to be very careful on this next one. The only other one, the only other big one that I, I know for sure for all of our schools is our graduation rate. And our graduation rate for each school is not necessarily just a reflection of that school. I'm going to start with Burchell High School. It's a core, you know, it's, it's an alternative school where you go when things are not going well already. So their graduation rate is lower than this, you know, lower than Wasilla High, just not very far away, right? Well, is that a Burchell problem or is that a Wasilla High problem? Or is it a, you know, is it a whole district wide problem? I think it's a whole district wide problem. I see that same exact thing happening, happening in Matsu Central, our largest school, has our largest graduating class, but it also has our lowest graduation rate. Is that a Matsu Central problem only? No, I don't think it is. It's a, it's a whole system problem where we have students who will, you know, they're struggling and then they will go to, you know, like as maybe a last resort, they go to Matsu Central. So that was a long way of saying it's really complicated. I have some metrics where it looks like our correspondence students are doing as well as our brick and mortar, and I have others where it doesn't look like they're doing nearly as well. But what I really don't have is a consistent data set to look at on any, on, on that group from K-12.
Thank you. I just, we hear a lot of anecdotal data on both sides, and it's really hard to tell. The Alaska Reads data, is there any, are you seeing any sort of data come back yet that you could use to surmise any kind of, how are we doing correspondence versus non correspondence kids?
Well, we're, we're only a year and a half into it now, so there's no trends yet. What I can tell you is that relative to the state, overall, our data is really great for the district. There's, there's some areas where we see individual schools that are not doing as well. I'm not picking on schools. It's just the data way I like to use the analogy of you're looking at it with a flashlight, not a hammer. So for instance, Birch Tree Charter School, because of their program, they, they, they don't start reading. So when they do, you know, as early as we do in our other brick and mortar schools. So then of course their data is, like reflects that. The same is true for some of our correspondence families. If they're choosing to focus on different aspects than what's being tested, then they test really poorly. And some, some do focus on exactly what we're doing in brick and mortar, and they test just fine. So once again, it's really complicated.
Any further questions? Assemblyperson Fawnoff, go ahead.
I'm going to return to you a little bit. I think Katie was waving maybe, I don't know if you, to my previous question about being innovative and maybe not just nationally, but even internationally, to see what maybe other countries spend a lot less, what is with the new AI and with robotics? And my guess, question is more broad, is there things that going to be in a big demand in 10, 15 years from now that we could start implementing? So by the time the kindergarten gets through to high school is our, and I know it's, the change is never comfortable, but I do believe it's important in speed that we're moving in. And, and I do think there is definitely room to that, just to say, we're already doing well. It's, it's good that we're doing things, but perhaps there is outside of ordinary things that we need to implement because like we're doing, I'm helping some of my kids doing like the basic math and things like that, when in reality we have like math genius of just a simple calculator that exists for many years. I don't know how much they're really going to remember the, the timetable in real life when they can have the tools. Maybe we should be focused on using the tools that we already have, AI and the technology to have them actually be more successful in life, whether it's a financial education and things like that, that is, we could start almost leading the way in the state, maybe even in the country, that here we have group of people that are really working together to achieve those things. And I, I want to know if maybe we could have a discussion on that too, because maybe somebody else even on this board has something that they're willing to bring up. Because I know in some of the strategic planning what we have with, with managing things that we throw ideas, we come, and a lot of times that goes into something. So something that didn't exist a year and a half ago, and then now it's already, we could see results of some kind. But somebody had to be creative and sponsor something, and then that's how things got that. So I am very welcoming of that, but I also want to know if maybe Kate or anyone else has something that they want to share with, so that we could start thinking about that as well. Because I do think it is important part of future and changes that we're experiencing.
Any further questions from school board members and/or assembly? If not, then I believe we have finished our joint items of business. And earlier this evening, we did change the agenda to allow another audience participation. So I will open audience participation at this time if anybody would like to address the assembly on either school issues and/or any issue.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and Assemblymember, Boardmembers, Staff. Just listening, and I'm going to try to do the best I can with two minutes and 45 seconds. First, I think to Mr. Swanson's questions about the formula, part of, part of the governor's reforms is to multiply certain students who aren't currently being sent through the multiplier so that districts like the Matsu, who are really leading the way in, in choice, as Superintendent Trainey said, are better funded for the things that they're already doing. And so that is definitely the homeschool correspondence piece, the career and technical education piece to that formula is really something that the governor is hoping that the legislature will agree to because that is, that districts like the Matsu will benefit a great deal. Ultimately, it's about parents and what parents are choosing. And so the governor wants funding to go to education that parents are choosing. And, and that's why he's proposed that. To Assemblymember Fawnoff's questions, the, it's a, education is a market. So what you're seeing is parents are smart. The governor believes parents are very intelligent. They care a great deal about their children and their children's education. They're going to get the best education that they can. Unfortunately, what happens sometimes with public education, and especially in our state, is that we make it difficult for them to do that by the legislation, the laws that we have in place. Another reason for the governor's reforms, such as open enrollment, which the district, the Matsu, already has embraced. There are some school districts that see facilities and students leaving facilities as a problem. And so they're trying to cram parents and, and students into facilities and into a system that is no longer demanded. That is not the Matsu. The Matsu recognizes that if they don't provide a product that parents want, parents will take their students and leave. And when that happens, the funding also goes with them. So I want to just finish by saying it's CTE, it's three quarters of the CTE courses that are taught in the state, the high schoolers, is taught in the Matsu, three quarters. And, and also again, in terms of choice, the Matsu is leading the way, and we should be very proud of what the district is doing. And I hope that other people, I'll wrap up real quickly, Madam Mayor, but.
Go ahead.
I, I hope that, that this conversation around funding and reforms doesn't get bogged down in terms of personalities and who doesn't like the governor and, and things like that because that will be a disservice to this school district and really to, to children throughout the state. So thank you again.
Do we have anybody online soon? We do not. Okay. So anybody else in audience participation? Okay, not then. So we are to Mayor and School Board parting comments. And Madam President, if you'd like to ask for parting comments from your school board members, please.
Absolutely. Member Shane?
I'll keep it brief, just a quick thank you to staff for walking through that budget again. It's, it's pretty incredible, the complexity of the budget and just where we get the funding from, as well as how that funding comes about, and then how it is spent, whether that's from federal or from state or borough. So I appreciate everything you did on that. I do want to just take a quick minute to just say, I am really incredibly proud of our school district and what they've, what we've accomplished so far. And I think that we're going to continue to see even better results as the years go on, as we push more onto the CTE, and we continue to be flexible in how we educate our kids, much like this hybrid program. And also want to mention to Mr. Fawnoff as well, I actually have been looking into some of the new developments that are coming out of AI tutoring. There's a, actually a school in Austin, Texas that, where they saw some rocketing and, and testing scores from AI tutoring. So from what I've seen from our administration at the school district is a continuation to be flexible and, and to find creative ways and how we can educate our kids. And so I'm hopeful that we'll continue to see that. So with that, thanks to everybody and have a safe drive home.
Member Swanson?
I'd like to thank the Assembly for hosting tonight and thank the staff for the clarification on my question. And thanks for this discussion and have a safe drive home.
Member Larson?
Thank you. The school district out here in the Matsu borough often gets painted with the same brush, both in the press, both by conservative and liberal press, in a negative fashion. It just kind of drives you crazy because they paint that brush, State of Alaska, this, they don't want choice, they don't want this. So just remember that when you're reading the newspapers, that that is not our district. You know, we're a leader in most everything, including stuff like, next year, we're going to incorporate the no cellphone policy. Now the state's working on a bill for that, but knowing our legislative body, it will not pass. But we will simply have it, yeah, silence your cell phones. Man, is that ever something else?
It's planned.
That was timing. I think, I think Dr. Trainey just called me when I'm doing this. And, and that policy seems like kind of a small policy, but our, our schools that we actually have, have done that has made a marked difference in the learning environment. And that's the kind of stuff that we're also going to do that, that increases, everything we do is to increase learning, increase student learning, increase student time. I wish we could add more days, like Arkansas and some of those states have added more teaching days. And we're looking at how we can improve the teaching days so we can get more teacher-student involvement. The more you can educate a kid, the more time you can spend with them, the more the scores go up. Thank you again for the budget presentation. I really appreciate it. Just to let you know, I think Anchorage was going to get rid of its, like our Matsu College courses and stuff like that. They're kind of going the opposite way. And we're increasing it. If a kid can graduate from our high school with a two-year AA degree and start in college as a freshman, but it be a junior, that's great accomplishments. We want to do the same thing with CTE. What we've been talking to different trades is to try to get the math, the different classes done while in high school. So when they go out and graduate, they can start in the trades and start on their apprenticeship programs to become journeymen. But if we can teach some of the courses in junior and senior high, as a junior or a senior, and do that, that will help the trades. And we've been talking to trades about that. That's the kind of courses that we want to also integrate into our, into our CTE. That's why we got three quarters of the CTE in the state. I'd like to get 100%, but you know. Again, thank you for inviting us. And we would like your suggestions to, to come to us about improving our schools. We're open 100% for that. We're a service organization, and we're going to give the best service for the bang of the buck. Thank you.
Member Berkey?
Thank you for your presentations, and everyone have a safe drive home tonight. Good night.
And, and I will say the same. Thank you. It was, it's always good to hear that budget stuff over and over and over again. I study my books and it's finally sinking in. And, and I appreciate how calm and collected they are when we ask so many questions. So thank you, and it was great having the conversations and questions from the Assembly. I love these meetings together. Thank you.
Caleb, did Assemblyperson Hale ever sign on? No, he did not. Okay. So parting comments, Deputy Mayor?
Thank you for your presentation. I've got nine kids, all of them been homeschooled. I think it was last year or the year before, we had five kids going to welding class at 5:00 at night right over here on Palmer Wasilla Highway. But the more opportunity they have to do stuff like that, it's big for kids. I mean, myself included, when I was in high school, it wasn't about college classes and stuff like that. I wanted to do building and agriculture and stuff like that that had my interest. Alaska is going to keep on growing, but it's going to be our kids that's going to be growing it and building it. And so the more classes they have to accomplish that is going to be big. I'd like to thank everybody for coming out, and I'd like to thank the Lord. Thank you for your blessings. Thank you for your love and mercy and grace. Please take care of our first responders, our teachers, our military. We pray for our libraries and our schools and our homes. Please help the sick, the hurt, the lost. Please send the Holy Spirit to lead us all up the narrow path. In Jesus' name, amen.
Assemblyperson Ours, parting comments?
Thank you for the presentations, and thank you for trying to make this simple. And thankfully, we have you both for helping us sort through this and doing this work. I guess just, you know, it, it really is mind boggling to think about how the world might change, and we're preparing kids that are going to, you know, exit in 10 or 12 years. And with AI and robotics, there may be jobs we train them for that don't even exist on the other end. And so how do you, you know, what, what skills do you give? It seems like my two daughters went through the schools, and they did both charter and Palmer High School, and got a really good education in both, and some amazing teachers out there. And they are going to have to be flexible and self-starters. And, you know, how you, you teach that and how you engage a young brain is really the genius of, of a teacher, you know? I think all of us had that experience. We had somebody kind of lit a fire in us, whether it was a coach or a teacher or somebody in the community. So one thing I would just love to see more of is more figuring out where these kids land. Where are they in two years? Where are they, are they in four years? Like try, we have the technology to try to stay in touch with them. And I guess I just anecdotally, you hear these stories from employers who say, I can't find somebody to do this job. They don't have the basic math, the basic writing, the basic show up skills, or you see on the slope. the basic show-up skills. Or you see on the slope, we have all these technical fields that people are coming from outside. So, just trying to figure out, you know, where these kids are going, I feel like to try to figure out if we're doing a good job or we need to do something different, it would be fabulous to hear from them where they are in two or four years and what they thought. They maybe get their feedback. What was missing in your school, in your education, and give us some insight into knowing if we're doing a good job lining up with the skills we're giving them, where they're able to go out in the world and be successful in their work careers and in life. So, thank you. Thanks, everybody.
Assemblyperson Fahnoff, parting comments, sir?
No, thank you.
Okay. Assemblyperson Gamble, parting comments?
Thank you, Dr. Trainey, Katie, and staff for your presentation tonight. Lot to absorb and a little bit of time. And I want to thank Assemblymember Nowers for reminding me about the $150,000 senior citizen deduction. I'll be on the phone to Juno tomorrow morning, talking to my legislators. Todd? So, anyways, great presentation. Thank you, everybody. Good night.
Assemblyperson Sumner, parting comments, sir?
Yeah, after Assemblyperson Nowers' comments, I think I would be remiss if I didn't mention that School Board President Kathy McCollum was my first-grade teacher. And one of my favorite teachers, actually.
Well, you turned out okay then, right?
Don't know a lick about AI, though. But thanks, everyone. Good night.
Mr. Turney, parting comments? Oh, wow. Parting comments, Madam Clerk? Parting comments, Borough Manager? Parting comments, Dr. Trainey?
Only if, you know, part of it was clear as mud, we're happy to sit back down with anybody individually and try to filter the water out from the mud.
Parting comments, Katie?
Thank you all for the time, and I'll just part by saying I think Manager Brown spoke far too less this meeting, so maybe next time we'll try to correct that.
My parting comments is, you did an excellent, I thought you'd probably go to nine o'clock, but you anticipated what our questions were going to be and put them in a presentation. And so, good job, and just amazing regarding the place that we are because of what's going on in Juneau, and, but that happens almost every year. And so, yeah, I don't know how we fix that. But anyway, everybody have a safe ride home. Bye-bye. I will adjourn the meeting at 7:12.